Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. Today is Monday, September twenty fifth, and it is seven P M. I welcome those who are here in the council chambers and those who are joining us virtually. I ask for you to stand for the National Anthem, please. Please be seated. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty. It was signed by the Weyandod and the Anishobi nations, including ancestors of the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Atawandurongk and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature of council. Seeing none, we have a delegation this evening from Kettle Creek Conservation. If I could ask you to come to the microphone, please. We have Elizabeth Van Hurin, who's the General Manager, Secretary, Treasurer. And we appreciate you being here, and I look forward to you, your, your remarks this evening. Oh, thereafter. So, unmine thereafter. Is that okay? Thank you. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure, Mayor, council staff. It's my pleasure this evening to be here. I wanted to start off with some good news. The good news is I'm not here asking for money. Uh, the financial commitment of the cost apportioning agreements has already been included in your two thousand twenty-three municipal levy. What I'm here tonight is to ask for your continued support of our programs and services that we've had with you, and we're simply asking tonight that we formalize them with a formal agreement. Uh, these changes are coming about because of changes to conservation authorities, so I'll go back a little bit. The Conservation Authorities Act was enacted in nineteen forty-six. I could have the next slide. Um, and at that time, there is a realization that we needed to really develop watershed-based programming in order to protect people and property from flooding and erosion hazards, as well as to conserve our natural resources for the future in terms of both economic and, uh, social benefit. Conservation authorities are unique. Uh, next slide, please. We're organized on a watershed basis, and what that means is basically all the land that drains into a certain body of water forms a watershed. And in our case, that's Kettle Creek. They're not, they're not, uh, very neat borders and that we transact a number of municipalities in order to do that. In our case, we have seven, uh, men, seven municipalities within our watershed. It also means that it's not very neat for the municipality as well. You don't have one conservation authority in your municipality of two cattle and catfish creek conservation authorities. So we have seven member municipalities within our watershed, and each one of those member municipalities is allowed to appoint a member to our Board of Directors, and in our case, Todd Noble, uh, sits on our Board of Directors, and that Board of Directors really develops our programs and services. Next slide. So the, the updates to the Conservation Authorities Act hasn't changed our funding sources. Our funding sources remain the same. There's three main sources of funding, municipal levy, or sorry, our self-generated, uh, revenue through campgrounds and user fees, the municipal levy, and then a provincial transfer payment, and those sources of funding are similar across all thirty-six conservation authorities in the province, but the apportionment might vary, might vary slightly from C A to C A. So what has changed with these, uh, updates to the Conservation Authority Act? Next slide. What has changed is the categorization of our programs and service, and the province is asking us to categorize them into what I like to refer to as buckets. So the first bucket is mandatory programs and services, and these are programs and services that we undertake, and, uh, we use municipal levy, and we can continue to do that without an agreement in place. The second bucket is programs and services that we undertake on your behalf. You're requesting the C A to undertake those programs and services for you. And then the third bucket, uh, is programs and services that our C A board deems advisable. If municipal levy is required for those programs and services, the government is now asking us that we have a formal agreement in place, and that's the purpose of my reason for being here tonight. I can have the next slide. So we've gone through that categorization of our programs and services, and as you can see from the screen here, the majority of our programs and services are under that first bucket. So mandatory programs and services like our natural hazards programming, our flood forecasting program, our conservation authority lands. Those are programs and services that require municipal levy, and we do not need to have an agreement in place. Category two, a good example with the municipality of Central Elgin with a category-two agreement is our agreement for the Kettle Creek Dog Park. Uh, we undertake that service on your behalf, uh, and there's an agreement in place to do that. Category three programs and services are really why we're here today. Those are, again, programs and services the board deems advisable. If municipal levy is required for those programs and services, we need to establish a cost apportioning agreement. If municipal levy is not required, there's no agreement necessary. So campgrounds, land acquisition, stewardship, education are all programs and services we undertake without municipal levy. We don't need an agreement for those programs. Tree planting and watershed monitoring, municipal levy is required, so we need to establish that cost apportioning agreement with you. Those two programs and services have been around for decades and, uh, for decades have counted on municipal support for them. I can have the next slide. And just to go into some detail about those two programs, uh, tree planting at the authority is very robust. We have a very robust program. We plant, uh, roughly fifty thousand trees per year, and that's a combination of, uh, large-scale rural plantings with seedlings, uh, roadside plantings with large stock trees, as well as community plants. There's a variety of examples on the screen before you. Uh, one great example recently was the two thousand twenty plant around the sewage lagoons that we undertook there. The second program and service is the environmental monitoring program. If I can have the next slide. This is a combination of, uh, provincial program with the provincial water quality, uh, surface water and groundwater programs, as well as we have, uh, a number of other surface water sites throughout the watershed that we monitor and then the convertible sites. We have about twenty-five locations throughout the watershed. Benfics are simply going out into the stream. We kind of get down to the base of the stream. We get a good grab of muck, and we look at the bugs in there, and the bugs can tell us how healthy that stream is and helps us better target our programs and services for, uh, benefit. All of that information is tied into a watershed report card, and we report those results back out to you, uh, every five years. Next slide. So those two programs and services have been around for decades. Uh, municipal levy is required uh, to deliver those programs and services, and with these recent changes to the Conservation Authorities Act, we need to have what's called an apportioning agreement in place by January first, two thousand twenty-four. And we've been working with your staff to ensure that the agreement that you have before you tonight, um, meets all the requirements of that, uh, C A Act, uh, which it does, and, uh, the last piece that we need, uh, to fulfill the C A Act requirement is a resolution from this municipality to enter into that agreement and formalize that agreement. Seven, seven member municipalities. You're the fifth one that I'm coming to with this agreement. The first four, Malahide, Southold, Middlesex Center, and Thames Center have all signed on to this agreement. I'm hoping that I can count on your support tonight. Uh, Saint Thomas and City of London, the agreements will be going towards their councils in October, and, uh, I anticipate full support of them as well. Uh, and just to finalize, again, not asking for money tonight, all of the, um, financial commitments have been included in your two thousand twenty-three levy. That was ten thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for these programs, but over the past three years, we've planted well over fifty thousand trees in your municipality alone in terms of seedlings and another thirty-four hundred in green in communities. So I hope not only the decades of, uh, decades of, uh, mutual partnership that we've had on these two programs, but certainly over the last three years, what we've been able to accomplish together. Um, I'm hoping that we can continue that by formalizing it with this agreement.
Ms. Van Hurin, thank you very much. Very informative, and, um, let me ask council if they have any questions for you. Any thoughts, comments? Our resident, uh, Kettle Creek expert.
To you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Liz, Elizabeth, for coming out and, uh, giving this presentation and your continued support for the C A.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Adoption of minutes. They were in verse on one of my sheets, so. Thank you, and you were right. I have a mover in a second for the minutes, please. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the minutes of the special meeting of council dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of council dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and regular meeting of council dated September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three be adopted.
All those in favor? Posed, carried. Moving on to correspondence received for information, two items. There's a letter from, uh, Paul Whitten, the Superintendent Commander of Municipal Policing Bureau, and we have the Elgin County Council highlights from September twelfth. Questions or comments from council? If I could get a mover in a second or please, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that correspondence items number one and two be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Posed and carried. Thank you. Moving on to reports, first report from Central Elgin Planning Office, C E P four eight two three. Um, are we, we're just receiving the report, Mr. McClure. You're not presenting. Any questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Watson, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report C E P forty-eight twenty-three be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the Township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a residence surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at four five five nine nine Roberts Line, which may be legally described as concession two, north part of lot eighteen, municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty-five oh six as amended.
All those in favor? Posed, that is carried. Item number two, C E P four nine two three. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report C E P forty-nine twenty-three be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the Township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw to permit residential use as a condition of an approved consent on lands located at four two four eight nine Southdale Line, which may be legally described as registered plan number two sixty-three, lot three, and part of lot four in the municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty-five oh six as amended.
All those in favor? Posed and carried. Thank you. Our next, moving on to the Chief Administrative Officer, C A O two oh two three, Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Cost Apportioning Agreement. Screen, oh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council before you is a report that summarizes the information that you heard from your delegation this, this evening. Uh, the report is a recommendation for council to approve the draft two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-eight Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Cost Apportioning Agreement.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I get a mover in a second or, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Bachman. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that report C A O two thousand twenty-three regarding Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Cost Apportioning Agreement be received for information, and that council approve the draft two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-eight Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Cost Apportioning Agreement.
All those in favor? Posed and carried. Next, a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, I C S three oh two three, which is with respect to the Hill Street cost sharing. Mr. Brooks, do you want to comment on this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, uh, going to take the opportunity to walk council through the report, uh, to help, uh, council understand the, uh, cost-sharing proposal, so. Okay, um, so. Here we go. Um, you can take it to the next slide, Delaney. So as council knows, there is a, uh, twenty-seven unit condo development being proposed for two seventy-nine Hill Street in Port Stanley. In order to service the site, the sanitary sewer on Hill Street will need to be extended uh, from just east of Beemish Street west to the subject site. In the report that's attached to the council agenda, on the last page, you'll see the drawing that details the sanitary sewer extension. If you'd like to refer to that drawing, it might help paint the picture of what we're trying to get across here. Uh, the municipality, uh, has the opportunity to service the, the existing six lots on Hill Street and take advantage of the mobilization and construction force, construction costs, uh, involved in extending that, uh, sanitary sewer, which the developer will be undertaking. This will provide a cost savings to the municipality and ultimately to the residents on Hill Street as it's cheaper to service these six lots now than it would be in the future where we would have to re-excavate the road. Next slide. So sanitary servicing, um, the developer would be proposing to pick up, uh, sanitary, the sanitary sewer from the existing stub and extend it west to the development. The existing lots on Hill Street would benefit from this ex- extension as they would now be able to con- connect to the sewer. It would be considerably cheaper to extend the services during the construction, as I mentioned earlier, uh, at this time, uh, with the cost-sharing agreement with the developer than it would be in the future. The lots on Beemish Street, in which there are fifteen, would also receive a deferred benefit. Uh, by deferred benefit, we mean that extending that sanitary sewer west past Beemish Street, which we would be doing, would provide a future outlet for Beemish Street. In addition to extending the sewer west past Beemish Street, a sanitary sewer stub would be extended north to the property line on Beemish Street. The next slide. So storm servicing. Uh, the condo site will have onsite stormwater management that controls a runoff to pre-development intensities. The outlet for the storm sewer will connect to the existing Hill Street municipal drain. This will require twelve meters of the drain to be upsized and reconstructed, a new manhole and a new headwall at the outlet. Roadworks, due to the excavation of the sanitary sewer, essentially the entire width of Hill Street will need to be reconstructed. Uh, council has two options on how it can proceed with the reconstruction. The first option would be to restore the road to a semi-rural cross-section, uh, which is, um, shallow ditches, no curb and gutter, or, uh, upgrade to an urban cross-section with curb and gutter and sidewalk. With a rural cross-section, the boulevard adjacent to the road can be, become a bit of a nuisance to maintain. It, uh, that's where all the road water is directed to, so it can get wet, and then you get cars driving onto the side of it, which can create rutting. Next slide. Staff propose the municipality cost share the sanitary storm sewer and roadworks with the developer proportional to the benefit each receives. For sanitary sewer, to determine the appropriate proportions, we add up the benefiting lots on each side and divide by the total number of benefiting lots. The groups of lots are as follows: twenty-seven lots on the condo development, six lots on Hill Street, and fifteen lots on Beemish. Next slide. Uh, for the sanitary sewer, we break up the sewer into three sections in order to proportion cost to each section. The first section is between the existing stub east of Beemish to the first manhole west at Beemish Street. The twenty-seven lots on the condo site, the six lots on Hill Street, and the fifteen lots on Beemish all benefit from this section of sewer. Therefore, the split in cost is fifty-six point three percent to the developer and forty-three point seven percent to Central Elgin, as Central Elgin has twenty-one versus the twenty-seven lots that, uh, the developer has. The second section of sewer being the stub heading north to Beemish, this will be covered one hundred percent by Central Elgin as it prevents it, presents a deferred benefit to the fifteen lots on Beemish Street. The third section of sewer between the manhole at Beemish and the manhole at the development, this section of sewer will be cost shared eighty-one point eight percent to the developer and eighteen point two percent to Central Elgin as a benefit, benefiting lots are twenty-seven to the, the development and six to Hill Street. Central Elgin, in addition to this, would pay one hundred percent of the cost to run the private drains to the six lots on Hill Street. Next slide. Oh, sorry, go back there, Delaney. With respect to storm sewer, staff propose the municipality cost share the upsizing cost of the manhole that ties into the Hill Street drain from the development. It pay the upsizing cost of the Hill Street drain, and it pay fifty percent of the cost of the headwall. The headwall would be a new piece of infrastructure which would help protect the gully, and therefore, that's why, uh, it's recommended that the municipality pay half of that cost. With respect to roadworks, if council wishes to restore the, the road to a rural cross-section, the developer has offered to pick up all costs associated with restoring the roadway if Central Elgin contributes fifty percent of the costs for asphalt removal, excavation, and topsoil and sod restoration. Staff suggests this represents a good value as the municipality is essentially receiving a reconstructed road. If council wishes to upgrade Hill Street to an urban cross-section, which is recommended by staff, the previous cost share applies. However, Central Elgin would pick up the remaining costs associated with the construction of the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and the catch basins. Estimated costs. Itemized costs estimates can be found on schedules two and three attached to the report. I won't take council through all those itemized costs, um, but happy to answer any questions at the end. Council can see on schedule four of the estimated costs. On schedule four, all of the estimated cost to Central Elgin include, uh, administrative and engineering fees. The total cost to Central Elgin would be as follows. Uh, sixty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight for the sanitary sewer works, twenty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for storm sewer works, and for roadworks, the initial aspiration to rural cross-section would be sixteen thousand one hundred dollars, and the additional cost to upgrade to an urban cross-section would be ninety-four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. All these costs include the ten percent contingency fee, twelve percent engineering and admin, and five percent geotechnical fees. Next slide. Funding. As mentioned in the report, the funding is proposed to come from the wastewater and road resurfacing reserves. All sanitary costs would come from the wastewater reserve, and the storm sewer and roadworks would come from the road resurfacing reserve. Now, that money coming from the sanitary or the wastewater reserve would be paid back through connection fees once those residents do connect, so that full cost would be paid back to that. Okay, next slide. Other options. So while staff is proposing a cost share here as the municipality is benefiting from, uh, this construction, council could consider no cost-sharing arrangement at all. Uh, in the event that council wished to go ahead with no cost sharing, we would restore to a rural cross-section. No services would be extended to any of the lots, nor would the, uh, sanitary, uh, um, stub be extended to Beemish Street. So in conclusion, staff is asking for the following direction, that council direct staff to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the developer, and whether it wishes to upgrade Hill Street to an urban cross-section or restore it to a rural cross-section, and three, confirm funding from the reserves. So thanks for listening. Happy to, happy to take any questions that you have.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Excellent presentation, perfect length, has some options, uh, very well done. Thank you. I think it gives us a, a good understanding. I have two questions before. Um, is it optional for the people, these houses, we talked about the exact numbers I sort of wrote down at one point? Is it six and fifteen, twenty-one houses that'll be affected? Okay, will it be optional for them to hook up to these services?
So that would be detailed through, uh, a further report to council post-construction. In the past, uh, the municipality has gone both ways. Some people were forced to connect on other recent projects. Uh, residents in which the sanitary sewer was run adjacent to the home were forced to connect within a certain period, time period. So a bylaw would need to be constructed in order to, uh, assess those costs, and staff would report back at a future date and to determine whether or not those residents would be forced to connect, or there would be a timetable for them to connect.
And just to follow up, what's a typical timetable? Is it sort of six months, six years, or somewhere in between?
A typical time period to connect may be two years to connect.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, Mr. Brooks, those twenty-one, those twenty-one lots have pre-existing houses on them. Is that correct?
There are two lots on Beemish, which we would be servicing. One would be an empty lot, and the other would be the park. Uh, the park sits on a residential-sized lot. Um, we would service that lot just in the event that, uh, anytime in the future, uh, council wish to, um, build that park elsewhere.
So can you just summarize for everyone how many actually, how many of those lots actually have houses on them currently?
Thirteen and six, so nineteen lots.
Counselor Graham.
So when this came to council previously, uh, I recall, and I had sent out a couple of the emails that I've received since people have started being aware of the situation here. We were advised that there would be no cost to the municipality and no cost to residents, and that residents would not be forced to hook up. So when we go and we tell this to the residents, and we have this information that comes to us, and then six months later, eight months later, this situation comes up, and there is a cost to the municipality, and there is a cost to the residents, I'm not comfortable with that, because to me, that seems like we're not being honest or transparent with our residents.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Um, what would the full cost for the developer be, Mr. Brooks, without any, um, just doing what he needs to do and putting the road back to the original state, please?
Sorry, if you give me a minute, I'll.
Sorry, yeah, I just couldn't see it on here, but just wanted to know that number. Thank you. Sorry, yeah, I just couldn't see it on here, but just wanted to know that number. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, were you asking for the total cost that the developer would pay? Uh, in conjunction with a cost sharing agreement or?
Just on his or her own? Without any assistance from the count- from central ogan?
I believe the cost is two hundred and fifty nine thousand. But uh, my apologies, I wasn't prepared.
Okay, cuz I was just gonna compare it to what they're paying just to do what they're doing. Versus what they would pay if there was a cost sharing and I I didn't couldn't see the final number for what it was for. Um, without anything, so if they just go and do everything that they have to do. To make this uh the twenty seven units, um, you said two fifty approximately? Okay, second question, do we have any development charges on these or are they rental units? Do we know?
There would be uh development charges on these units.
Okay, um. Any other questions or comments from the group here? Councillor, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, is there a number, like over the twenty one properties that we would provide the service for? Is there a number that are interested in that service?
Staff haven't pulled uh the uh the residents out on Hill Street. So I I don't know the level of interest in hooking up.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if anybody had showed interest in it, so thank you.
Follow up on that, Mr. Brooks, if this wasn't done, when when is it scheduled to have any so- sewer sewer or sanitary work done in that area? Is it on our plans for any time coming up in the near future, please?
Uh, as part of the twenty twenty four budget, staff will be taking another look at the five-year capital plan. This will not be included on the five-year capital plan. It's unlikely. Uh, to take place in the next five to ten years unless the um need arises due to failed septic systems.
Thank you very much. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brooks, um. So none of the houses west of, as you go west of that development property, it kind of winds around the hill. None of those have sewer either, I'm guessing.
No, there's none of the houses uh west on Hill Street have sewer now, uh. Future servicing for those lots uh could go either east or west uh depending on uh servicing options there.
Questions or comments, councillor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Brooks, and just one thing, just wanna make sure that I clarify here. So you said the cost would be recouped, our cost would be recouped through connection fees that would be put on the residents, is that correct?
That's correct. We would take the total cost of the sanitary works and assess those costs. Uh, to the benefiting homeowners at the time that that connection is done. Now that would be up to council on when they wish to. Um, you know, they could force those residents to connect within a certain amount of time or. Uh, just make those conditional upon whenever whenever it is that they decide to connect.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks, councillor uh Graham, then councillor Hoppin, please.
So just to confirm as well that you didn't uh go out and talk to the residents or notify the residents that this is what we were looking at? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Councillor Hoppin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I believe we do have in union some similar. Setups where there are people who have the option to connect when they want to and. It's worked out nicely in terms of people having the choice if they decide not to do additional work on. Systems that they're currently using and things to connect, so. Uh, I see how that could sort of. If we chose to not force a timeline, that could be good for some of them. Um, I would suggest that at the time that Hill Street was talked about. Uh, one of the hugest comments that I was getting back from members of the public was about concerns for pedestrians and people getting on and off of school buses and things like that. So if we're gonna talk about these options. Maybe taking advantage of this opportunity to put in sidewalks would be a good safety consideration for that community.
Questions or comments? Councillor Watson?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if we go back to a rural restoration of that whole area. Our cost is a hundred and twelve divided by the twenty one units, that's only fifty three hundred dollars to hook up for people. That's not a lot of money, right? And if we can do it right now at this time, it I think it's good value while everything's opened up there right now. So. That's just my comment, it's not a lot at this time.
And councillor Watson, do you think it should be optional for the people to hook up or do you think it should be mandated?
Uh, eventually they'll probably have to hook up anyways. There's a lot of congestion up there and you get more people up there flushing their toilets, they'll probably have to, so it's nice to maybe have it built now for the future.
Sir, thank you, councillor Graham, please.
Again, concerns that the these people were told that it wasn't gonna cost them anything and now it is costing them and. Uh, why wouldn't we make, we're not, I I was talking to a wise fellow today and he said, you know, we're not sharing in the profits. Of the condos, we're not sharing in the condo fees, why would we share in the costs? When this is the developer that wants to do this project, let them foot the bill. Um, because they're the ones who are going to be making all the money on it. And again. When we we're not being transparent and our and honest with our residents about. The fact that we told them that it wouldn't be costing them anything and now it definitely is.
Councillor, or uh, Mr. Brooks, please.
Uh, I just wanna reiterate, the reason that this cost sharing proposal is coming to council is because it's cheaper to do it now than it would be in the future. At some point in the future. Those residents will have to connect to that sanitary sewer. They'll have to do full excavation of the of that sanitary sewer, they'll have to cut the sanitary sewer. Add in tees, run pipe up to the property line, restore each one of these connections. New asphalt over top of it, that's why it's being proposed. Now, when those residents connect, that's a, that's a different story for council to. To consider here, it doesn't have to. Cost some anything here in the, you know, the next couple of years, however. It will be cheaper to do it now than it will be in the future, and that's why it's being brought forward.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Councillor Bachman.
So just to summarize, Mr. Brooks, it's. We pay a sharing now versus the whole ticket years from now. Is is that kind of a fair assessment when it comes down to, cuz we're gonna have to undo. Basically what we're doing if we need to continue on with that project.
Yeah, there there are definite cost sharings there, the excavation's going to be open, so we're going. You know, if we cost share it, we're just gonna run the pipes each way and uh. Yeah, it's it's cheaper to do it now, um, a lot of it will have to be redone in order to do it in the future.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks, and to your point, obviously excavation is important and the pipes will be there. Problem I, or not problem, but the issue I see is is that if the developer is on for, if they do it on their own, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Approximately, correct?
I I believe so, and I apologize, I didn't have that number ready for council.
Well, where I look at it and to 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 the point being that if they're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand. And then with a cost sharing, it goes down. Um, I think where the the concern is, is that how much of that should go to the developer that has gotten the twenty six houses? Versus the um eight or nine people that have sewers and water on the street that. The only reason that they're getting asked to put these on is because of development that was was put in their neighborhood. So I think you can see the council is sort of looking at this from from both sides, I mean, comments from from other folks from. How do you wanna go forward? We've got a couple of options here, so I'll take direction from the floor. Councillor Graham, please.
I'd like to make the motion that we don't do the cost sharing, that the developer is uh responsible for all costs here.
You have a second, or? Deputy Mayor?
Could we record this vote?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Graham, seconded by deputy mayor Noble. That the developer be responsible, or sorry, that report ICS thirty twenty three be received for information. And that the developer be responsible for the sanitary servicing costs associated with the two seventy nine Hill Street condo site.
All those in favor? We're going to. Opposed? Call the vote, please.
Councillor Graham?
Yes.
Councillor Hoppin?
No.
Councillor Watt?
No.
Councillor Connors?
Yes.
Councillor Bachman?
No.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Moving on, Director of Asset Management Development Services, AMDS four three two three, monthly bylaw reports. Questions or comments on that document? Saying none, if I could get a mover in a second or please, councillor Watson. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that report AMDS forty three twenty three regarding August twenty twenty three, monthly bylaw report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Moving into bylaws, we have bylaw two eight two seven. Questions or comments, please? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to draw to council's attention, this is a housekeeping. But um, you had hired me, it was under title and by job description to be both the CAO and clerk. When I was doing some research uh for. For some other information, I pulled up my bylaw and noted that there was only the appointment to CAO. And so this is a housekeeping issue of which, to make sure your appointments and your hiring practices are aligned. Municipal Act does require you to designate a clerk. Um, and this was through uh you both your hiring process that was done. I would just want to make sure that if I were to proceed with any type of signing authority, I was appointed to do so. I did hear that there were some questions, I had previously sent out an email, not received any back from from council, but I have heard there are questions. If you wish for me to take those questions or for you to pass those questions on and defer, it's also an option for council to do. So that I can fully inform council why this housekeeping measure was put before you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, can I get a motion? Motion to defer? Motion to move forward, did, uh, we talked about deferring, is there anyone that wants? Councillor Graham?
So I'm 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 just kind of uh wondering why we just can't move along as we currently are, what the what the the difficulty is with that when. Uh, we've been doing so with the interim CAO currently.
Councillor, or, sir, this, Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Act depires the municipality to appoint a clerk. At hire, I was hired as a CAO clerk, but your appointment only stated in the the appointment bylaw. The uh regulations of the municipal act for CAO, and this would then align both your hiring and your appointments. I'm not too sure, I had asked, um. I had asked Wendell Graves if he was aware and he was not aware that there were changes in in his bylaw. As well. And so at this moment in time, council has not appointed a clerk. That's that's the reason for the for the the, it's just a. It's a housekeeping issue. My concern does become that if there are any questions or asks of me in the capacity as a clerk. That I actually have council's authority to proceed so. Right now, you do not have a clerk assigned.
And just so I'm correct, Mr. Graves did not have this in his interim contract, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, when I returned to look at the previous bylaws, Mr. Graves' bylaw only said CAO. The, it said CAO clerk in the title.
And you're said CAO clerk in the title?
It said CEO in the title, however, the. The portion within the bylaw itself only speaks to the position as CAO. I went back to Paul Shipways uh bylaw, of which both were underneath his position as well. So that's where.
Thank you, questions or comments? Councillor Hoppin, thank you.
Thanks, can I move for us to uh read the bylaw then? And I move. That the council endorse the bylaw, do we need to read it all three times? Therefore, can I move that we read it the first and second time?
Do you have a second, or councillor Hoppin? Councillor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Hoppin, seconded by councillor Bachman, that bylaw two eight two seven be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated.
May I ask that we record that one as well?
Sure. Can we record the vote, please?
Councillor Graham?
No.
Councillor Hoppin?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Councillor Connors?
No, no.
Councillor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's defeated.
Other business, court of revision composition. Do any explanation on this? Ms. Greenall?
I believe for the court of revision that we were needing to have an appointment. To this court.
Great, Mr. Brooks. The uh quarter revision is typically made up of three members and. Deals with appeals to assessments uh regarding uh municipal drains. So we will have a quarter of revision coming up here in the not too distant future to follow up the two. Uh, um, reports that came to council uh a couple of weeks ago, so. Uh, we would need uh three members.
Three members of council?
Three members of council, please.
Any submissions, councillor Watson? Deputy Mayor? Councillor Connors? You sure? Okay, we've got your three. Mover in a second, or please, councillor Watson? Councillor Hoppin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Watson, seconded by councillor Hoppin. That council appoint councillor Watson, deputy mayor Noble and councillor Connors to serve on the quarter of revision.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And if I get a mover in a second or please to move into closed session? Councillor Connors? Deputy Mayor? Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by councillor Connors, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that council proceed into closed session at seven forty eight P M in order to address a matter pertaining to. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried?